Would take a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good news. Anyone have any good news they'd like to share? Okay, then we'll just move to item three, public hearing.
Public hearing pursuant to the provisions of chapter 404 of the Code of Iowa on the proposal to adopt an amendment to the revitalization plan for the 2013 consolidated Fort Dodge urban revitalization area within the city.
We'll declare the hearing open and ask first for written comment.
There were no written comments.
Is there any comments from the public on this hearing item? Hearing no comment, we will close the hearing to move to item 3A, please.
Resolution adopting an amendment to the plan for the 2013 consolidated Fort Dodge urban revitalization area.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Again, I'll ask for comments from the public. Anything from the table? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show that pass unanimously. Item four is committee and department reports, correspondence, and proclamations. I do have a proclamation. Is there anybody here for the small business Saturday event? And I'll just quickly read this. Whereas the government of the city of Fort Dodge, Iowa celebrates our local small businesses in the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States responsible for 63% of new net jobs created over the last 20 years. And whereas small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, on average, 33% of consumers, holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. Whereas 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And whereas the city of Fort Dodge, Iowa supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore be it resolved that I, Matt Bemmerich, Mayor of the city of Fort Dodge, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Thank you. Any other committee or department reports?
We have a couple of department reports. Well, first before, as Vicki walks up, just as a recollection, we're going to have, we're going to do a special meeting for the 20th, which is next Monday. We'll do workshops, we'll do the CIP workshop at 5:00 and then have the meeting at 6:00. And then Vicki's going to mention, we have an item that was missed off this agenda that we need to get done, approved by the council. So we're going to be looking at, well, I just turned over to you, we're looking at a special meeting even this week.
So Vicki from, Vicki Reek from the Department of Business Affairs and Community Growth, we are in the process of writing an application for the EPA grant for citywide environmental assessment funding in the amount of $300,000. And a resolution of support is required for that application. And I failed to get it on the agenda for this meeting tonight. And the postmark has to be November 16th. So I'm asking if it would be possible to have a special meeting on Wednesday, the 15th for five minutes to approve a resolution of support for this application.
Unacceptable. So I guess we just need four of you that can be here. And we could do it, I mean, we could do it any, any time within basically 24 hours that we publish. So it's a single just item. So are we good for like a, do you want to do like a 5:00?
Can anybody do a noon?
On Wednesday?
Do a lunch one, it'll take five minutes.
One, two, three.
I will not be here. I'll be out of town.
No, Wednesday at noon? No?
I could dial in if I had to.
You could dial in?
Yeah, on the road, yeah.
One, two, three, four, I don't know. That's four.
Could you call in, Andy?
I can call in, yeah.
Can you call in?
We have two call-ins?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can put, I can put one on my phone and one on Dave's.
Yeah, unless we got the phone fixed, I don't know if we, we're supposed to get that phone line fixed. I don't know, but we'll, we could probably, we could probably dial in a couple.
Wednesday at noon. Vicki will send me a calendar invite, so I don't forget.
Yes, and my apologies. Thank you.
Don't worry about it.
Peanut butter and jelly sandwiches.
Be my own lunch.
Mr. Mayor, this is also the last regular scheduled meeting before Thanksgiving, so you know what that means?
Refuge.
Refuge's schedule.
Oh. Do you want to read that? Because it's always a joy to listen to.
Okay, in observance of Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, November 23rd, 2017, refuge collection routes for the city of Fort Dodge will be as follows.
Shouldn't laugh real loud, Merrill. He's going to make you read it if he hears you chuckling back there.
Well, I always read this. Unless, do you want to read it? It's your last Thanksgiving holiday, so you can read it if you like. Refuge normally collected on Thursday, you know, yeah, refuge, oh, let me start over. Refuge normally collected on Thursday, November 23rd, will be collected on Friday, November 24th. Monday and Tuesday, refuge routes will be the normal schedule. Recycling collected, collection for those residents east of 15th Street will, will take place on Wednesday, November 22nd. There will be no curbside yard waste pickup. The central maintenance facility yard waste disposal site will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd. Weather permitting, it'll be open on Friday, November 24th from 8:00 a.m. till noon. And on Saturday, November 25th, from 8:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m. The last day of the yard waste site will be open is Friday, December 1st, weather permitting.
Good job. Anything else?
I think that's all we have.
Okay. No.
I'll send it to you.
No, no, that's okay. Okay, we'll move to item five, which is comments and questions from the public. Is there anything not on the agenda tonight? Good evening, Dale.
Dale Strucker, E Street. Does anybody know how much longer the street lights on Avenue, or Central Avenue, Third Street are going to be off? They've been off for over a year now and just, there's like, well, there's six lights on Central and only two of them work. There's two on Third Street that don't work, and there's none at all on the 200 numbers on Central Avenue.
Right.
And originally, you know, it was because of the construction on First Avenue North. And then we were waiting for new poles, so I'm just wondering, there's like seven or eight that ain't on down in that area.
I, I'll tell you what, I'll get an answer for you and then get back with you.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else not on the agenda?
Gil Valstein of Fort Dodge, Iowa. I have a question in regards to, this is pertaining to my water billing. I noticed on my billing that, and this, the address that I'm going to refer to is 1306 and 1308, Third Avenue Northwest. The, on my billing, I have a charge for storm sewer. In that facility, or in that area, I should say, there, there is no storm sewer. So I, I'm confused because I, I know my water bill. When I use so much water, I have to pay for that, which I receive my water. But in this case, with a storm sewer, I, I don't see that I receive anything for the charge that is made to me. So that's my question.
Sure. So when we developed the stormwater ordinance, that would be, I believe, almost 10 years ago.
Yes.
All property is charged as stormwater utility because all water ends up in some form, way or another, in our streams, rivers, or in, in the system. This charge is for the collective overall system on every road in the community, every property in the community, because there's water that runs off somewhere and it goes somewhere either to drainage tile or goes down one of the city's intakes. So the overall system is what we're paying for. It'd be very similar to, you know, you may not drive down my street, and my street might use local option sales tax to get a new driving surface, which you paid some of. It's paying for the overall collective system of roads, same with the stormwater utility. It's paying for the overall collective stormwater utility to provide that. I, I'm sure you're aware when you were mayor and others, we always have struggled with fixing or replacing or repairing stormwater systems because there was no funding mechanism. So we put that together about, about 10 years ago, and we've been using that to capitalize local projects as well as large projects in order to create better drainage in the entire system of our community.
Okay, I, and I understand what you're saying. I guess it's somewhat debatable of where that water at that particular location goes because, you know, it, it does nothing but filter into the ground.
Sure.
It does not run off into the, the creek or the river or anything. So I, and I under, I understand the position of the charge, but yet, to some extent, I, I don't think it's quite fair in that particular area because the water stays there and does nothing but filters into the soil.
Right.
So that's my, that's my question.
And I appreciate that, but all the people that live in that area don't just habitate that area. They also drive around the rest of the community. And I'm, I'm not sure, you must pay the water bills for those particular units. So, you know, like, I may not, I might live in that property, but I'd pay that bill. I'm not just driving on that street there. I'm driving on streets all over the community. We got to get the water off those streets and off of businesses and off of other areas. So I mean, for, for instance, like 25th Avenue North, 29th Avenue North, that have always flooded around the mall, we're making repairs and upgrading those systems as well as other systems around the community. And those are for the betterment of the entire city so that we can drive and move around the community, whether I live on the east, west, north, south sides of the, of town. We all are participating in that utility to provide the service to keep those roads free of water and get, get it going somewhere besides ponding and pooling like we've all seen. And not just in that area, but all over our entire city. I definitely understand your position, and I remember having these conversations many, many times. But it is for an overall system, not just for a specific property.
I can understand that. But then I might, my question might be, how long are you going to let that area just more or less take care of itself as far as that drainage water? Because it floods in areas there. And so where are we at on that schedule?
Long-term, the goal would be to have curb and gutter and storm intakes throughout the entire city, in the underdeveloped and, and non-developed areas as well as those existing areas. It's a matter of prioritization in our capital improvement planning that the council, myself, and a lot of staff give input to. So it, it's not that we're ignoring that we know there's not curb and gutter and intakes for you to use to get the water away from your specific property. It's just a matter of prioritizing those and getting them installed at some later date. And, and we may never, in our lifetime, see curb and gutter there, but we would like to see enhanced drainage and throughout the entire community. So it could be a project related to that neighborhood, but it may not provide instant curb and gutter to that area.
Okay, I understand that. I would, I would hope that with that charge being made to everyone in that area, that it would be put on the agenda of when we could look forward to having that relieved as far as the, with the water.
It's definitely, there's some projects coming up in that area that are related to streets and, and infrastructure. I couldn't speak specifically to what drainage projects are related to them, but I know there are projects coming. And, and we look at drainage and the opportunity to create better drainage in all the, any project we do. So I would just encourage you to, to keep an eye on those things. And if you ever have a question, contact me or any of the council members or David. And if we're doing a large project in your area, I, we definitely are looking at the drainage while we're doing it.
Okay. Well, I hope that would not be too far off because I, I think the, well, in fact, I know probably you're familiar with the new Casey store that's there. The storm sewer went to that point and then never continued any further. So my wish is that it would, that would be looked at rather seriously to alleviate that problem.
Yeah, with the riverfront redevelopment projects as well as the Northwest River District, I think you'll see roadway improvements that include drainage as we start to work through that Northwest River District, which includes going up towards that Casey's and the Starlight.
Okay. And I feel somewhat nervous being in this nice facility that I, I didn't get to enjoy while I was in the position. But I admire you. It's, it's very nice.
It is nice. It feels good to come into a place and have, have a sense of place.
I have not been here before, so I was quite surprised.
I was glad to see you come in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions from the public? Not on the agenda or anything on the consent agenda? All right, we'll move to the item six, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda removing items L and double A for separate vote.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda removing L and double A. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show that carry unanimously. We'll move to item L.
Resolution approving articles of incorporation for the joint building authority for Webster County Wellness and Cultural Center.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item L.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Comments from the table?
I would just like to have David tell us a little bit about this joint building authority. I think most of us at the table, all of us in fact, agree that this is a great thing. And I think just a little bit of a background would be informative.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. So there's a specific section of the Iowa code, I can't remember off the top of my head, but allows you to create joint building authorities. And it's a unique section of the code that allows counties and their county seat, so only the city that's the county seat of a county can participate in this joint building authority. And what it, what it really allows the city and the county to do is work together to, and they create the authority, and the authority is basically run by a three-person commission. One person appointed by the city, one person appointed by the county, and then one person appointed by both bodies jointly. And then that, then that commission sets about finding a location first and getting that approved by the city and county, and then goes about and, and working on a project that would be a facility that would, could be housed or used by both the city and the county. And so they find a location, and then once they're ready to build a building, the authority has the ability to sell revenue bonds that are payable only from the revenues generated from the facility to pay off the bonds. And then they are, again, they're, they're revenue bonds, so they don't go against the debt limit of the city or county. They're not debt on the city or county. Now, the city and county can agree through lease agreements to make payments towards those bonds to help pay them off. So in general, that's, that's how the, the code works. Specifically here, we're planning on using the code to assist with the, the development of a recreation center, or we're calling it a wellness and cultural center. And that's something that's been worked on for quite some time. In fact, I think going back many, many years, maybe even eight years or so, the idea of a new recreation center has been, has been discussed and planned for. We are in the midst of planning for a facility, you know, in conjunction with the Warden Plaza now. We believe that there's going to be a successful fundraising program for this facility. There's also grants that are available for it as well. So this authority would own that building. Now, if the authority was unable, you know, if, if, we believe that there, you know, there's going to be a certain portion of the funding that's going to going to need to become from leases from the city and county to, to fill out and complete the, complete, complete the facility as planned and funded for it. So this authority would be able to do that. So this is the first step of several that are going to take place with this authority. We'll pass it, or the city council will consider it tonight. If it passes, that's step one. The county supervisors are considering the same articles of incorporation tomorrow morning at their meeting. If that passes, the authority is then established. It'll be recorded with the Secretary of State, and it becomes an entity. The next item will come from the city council, will be appointing a member from the city and also voting on the member, that'll be the joint appointment. The county will do the same. So then we'll have the, the commission formed. They will then have to create their own bylaws, and then they'll, we'll get the, I think the county and city approve the bylaws, too. At that point, that's when the fundraising kicks in. And there's a group of engaged citizens and volunteers that'll go out and try to raise money for the Wellness and Cultural Center. And we expect it to take about six months. At that point, we're going to assess how our fundraising's success has been, assess the other grants, and then figure out what's, is there a gap that needs to be paid for by public sources? And then that'll be a decision that, if everything goes well, we will be deciding sometime this spring on that, or at a later date if it takes longer. I mean, this project's taking a while to date. So in, in general, that's it, in a nutshell, what this agency does. I think, you know, to editorialize a little bit, I'm, I really want to applaud, I don't think anyone here, I really want to applaud the county supervisors for taking on this endeavor and working with the, the planning committee and myself and, and the city council. Typically, counties have taken maybe not such an active role, but I think these, the county supervisors see the workforce benefit and see the economic development benefit of doing this facility. And I think we're going to, we're going to, like we always do in Fort Dodge, we're going to set a very high mark with our city and county cooperation and building a really awesome facility. And people are going to look to us as, as leaders in the state of Iowa for what you can do with, you know, with this joint building authority. So any questions I can answer?
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have the item L on the table. Second, all those in favor, all those in favor of item L, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show that pass unanimously. Item double A.
For approval, winter trail maintenance procedures.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve item double A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from the table?
Mr. Mayor, I ask for this to be pulled off. I've, I've kind of wavered back and forth on this. I understand the idea that we should be able to utilize our trail systems throughout the year. However, I've got some hesitation. I just, I just disagree with the fact. I don't think we should be, as a city, maintaining or clearing sidewalks or side paths in residential neighborhoods. I think we should focus solely on our main arteries. I noted in item AA that from the middle school south on 32nd Street was not as approved as a maintenance in this plan. I think that's a safe connection for especially children on the south side of town to be able to get up to the middle school if they need be. Additionally, I, I feel even though we don't necessarily have to incorporate new trails in residential neighborhoods as part of this maintenance plan, I think by accepting like Raywood, for example, that we're setting a precedent that it's on the table with us. And in residential neighborhoods, most, in most situations, individuals in those neighborhoods have some access to either low-traffic areas or sidewalks to get to an open trail or school, business, whatever else they may need to go to. That's why I think the focus should be put on the arteries where there is not safe travel, as opposed to your residential neighborhoods. And lastly, just to preface this last comment, I don't think we should address ice on the trails, and that is included in here. I think that's just too cost prohibitive and work prohibitive, prohibitive. But I guess I struggle with, if we're maintaining sidewalks but not addressing ice, what is our end goal? If our goal for the, to clear these sidewalks is to provide access for our citizens to travel, but let's say we have an ice storm in the middle of December, it never goes above freezing, is that pathway ever going to be able to be traveled by our citizens? And lastly, I'm just worried that as our trail system expands, that...